Welcome, everyone. Today is Monday, September 15, 2025, and this is a regular meeting of the City of Asbury Park Planning Board. Chairwoman Kerzak, can you please call this meeting to order?
This meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975. Adequate notice of the meeting has been provided to the Coaster and Asbury Park press by publication of the annual meeting notice and posted on the municipal bulletin board and municipal website. All notices are on file with the Board Secretary. Official action may be taken on the following matters before the Board. The meeting is being recorded by AP TV. Please join me in to smooth the flow.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, for the living and justice for all.
I will now take roll call. James Benano.
Here.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Here.
Jim Henry.
Here.
Jeremy Hoffman is not present. Mayor Moore is absent this evening. Jen Souter is absent at the moment. Daniel Shinameo is absent. Bob Zuckerman is absent. Kathy McLaughlin is absent.
Not here.
Okay. Was not expecting that. Vice Chair Goonan.
Here.
And Chairwoman Barbara Kerzak.
Here. Today, the application is for 1001 First Avenue.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Professionals, and ladies and gentlemen of the Board. My name is Kevin Kennedy, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant. As you are undoubtedly aware, this is a continuation from our hearing from, I believe it was August 4. And we had a very active night. I think we had the entire night. We appreciate that. We heard testimony from our engineer, our architect, our landscape architect, and our traffic engineer. And my recollection was that at least two of the more pressing issues were about garage door and having an audiovisual system, alarm system. Madam Chair, I think there was a straw poll. It wasn't unanimous, but I think the majority opted or preferred the alarm system. And I think, as is always the case, there was a request to have some more lighting details, showing all light sources and identifying all of those important details. We had submitted revised plans, and I personally thank the Board Professionals for the very, very, very quick turnaround on that so we could be here tonight. And Madam Chair, what I would like to do, unless you and the Board members feel otherwise, is just recall my engineer and then to talk about some of the changes, recall my architect to talk about some of the changes, and then rest, unless you all feel different.
Yes, because there's a number of items that we also had that we wanted modifications to the plans, so we should see those.
Perfect. So without any ado, I'll call up Doug Cleland, our engineer.
Doug.
Hey.
How are you? Do you search your right hand? Do I have a hand as well? Do all of you solid swear affirm testimony about giving this matter the truth, all truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Starting with Doug, please identify yourself for the record.
Sure. My name is Doug Cleland with Insight Engineering and the civil engineer for the applicant.
Are you still in good standing with your license here in the state of New Jersey since August 4?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Donna?
Tom Miller, Board Planner.
Sam Avakian, Board Engineer.
Thank you.
All right.
I'm surrounded by all the things on Doug's desk.
Don't hurt your eyes.
How do you live like that?
Right? I normally have three monitors.
I have anxiety.
It's much more spread out.
Are you getting anxious?
I am. Exactly. Now. So Doug, you're under oath. You're the Board Engineer. You were here at the first meeting, and you recall what some of the Board concerns were. Why don't you talk about the revised plans and those things that you addressed in response to Board concerns?
Absolutely. So I wanted to go through a summary of the changes that we made from the last meeting. We heard the Board's concerns on a number of matters, and I've summarized them here. So I'll go through the various things that we changed as they relate to the site, and then I'll let the architect speak more about changes to the building. So first was in the, near the corner of First Avenue and Langford Street. I'll zoom this in here. We eliminated a walkway that used to go from the parking entry out to the public sidewalk. That's been eliminated to make room to expand the rain garden into that area. So that helps reduce our proposed impervious coverage, and it also helps us to provide some additional detention as it relates to stormwater management. Secondly, the gas meters were relocated also on First Avenue, right in this area here is the location of the proposed gas meters. There is, it's behind the proposed fence. I'm going to zoom in a little bit more. There is a fence there. There's a line here for our proposed fencing, as well as landscaping that will fully surround it, and it'll be entirely screened from public view. And then also, our lighting plan was revised. If you remember, we discussed, originally, we had 3,000 Kelvin lights in the proposed parking garage, which would have required a design waiver. We've eliminated that and changed them to 2,700 Kelvin. That eliminates the need for the design waiver. Also, I know there was some concern about what the garage lighting would look like if you are, were a pedestrian walking along the sidewalk or a car within the roadways. So we did some, we made some changes to alleviate some of those concerns. The mounting height of those garage fixtures was increased to 11 feet, so they'll be tight up against the ceiling. And also, and I'm sure the architect will speak more about this, there were some modifications done along the parking garage openings, along Langford and along First, so that there was a louver installed to hide the source of the light so that it won't be seen if you're on the sidewalk. And I know that's also the case. I believe that the header was made larger along this open portion of the building, along this common property line to the west. So in my opinion, the source of the light will be hidden. It won't be visible from public view. And also, as I mentioned, we changed the lighting temperature to 2,700 K.
And was, and I know that we're looking at this view. I'm assuming that the plans were actually changed as opposed to just this?
Yes, we did resubmit our site plans. We revised them in record time, got them back into the board.
I noticed.
Yes.
All right. So all that's in the new plans. Okay.
Correct. Yeah, we tried to, and we tried to take care of as many of the engineering comments as we could, given the short amount of time. But yes, that was one of the items we definitely changed, was the revised lighting design. Also, along Langford Street, the two pedestrian entrances, we did add a couple of benches adjacent to either side of the pedestrian entryway here. You can see a bench to the north and south here. And then also, on the other side, same thing with the pedestrian entrance way, there's a bench on either side in addition to a bike rack. And we didn't install a bike rack. We didn't, we're not proposing a bike rack on the corner of Langford and Second because that is the location of our internal bike rack, and we thought it would be sort of redundant. There's plenty of bicycle storage within the garage there, and we did add one on the corner of Langford and First.
Excuse me, Doug?
Yes.
For the record, Jennifer Sauter is here.
You're right.
Kevin, Jennifer missed about five minutes of testimony. Do you mind that she continues to participate without?
No, I don't, and welcome. And just by way of very, very brief review, I said we were here earlier, and we had the plans revised. The most pressing, in my mind, concerns were a need for garage details and the alarm, visual alarm system, and also, the Board properly wanted a lot more lighting details and to make sure that there'd be no excess lighting and reduced lighting. And what Doug here, our engineer, testified, that the plans have been revised. The lighting, the intensity of the lights has been reduced so that it is compliant, and he did expand the rain garden. So I think we're current and up to date.
Thank you. I apologize.
All right. And speaking of which, that was my next item, was the pedestrian alert system. So it's both visual and auditory. It'll be installed on the exterior face of the building near the garage entry. As was discussed at the last hearing, you know, there is a good distance from the driveway exit, the curb cut, the sidewalk, where people will be walking, to that garage door. But we heard the Board's concerns, and obviously, safety is always paramount, so we went ahead and added that alert system and provided that detail on the plan. And then finally, on the corner of Langford and Second, I think we already had the ADA ramps properly designed on First and Langford, but we also modified the ADA ramps along Second and Langford so that the detectable warning strips will be perpendicular to the existing crosswalks that are there.
In plain English, I think that was, there was a concern that there'd be no rounded in that way.
Yes, so we did have, yeah, before this, we had a rounded detectable warning around the proposed curb radius here. So instead, we have separate ramps with that ADA detectable warning strip in line with the, perpendicular to the crosswalks. And that's basically the summary of the proposed site changes. I will note, too, we did revise the street type in accordance with recommendations from your planner, and that's been indicated on this exhibit as well as the submitted site plans.
And Doug, one more question for you, and this might not be for you. If it is, then I apologize. I think there was a discussion about having some type of security or secured entrance through the stairwells in the parking garage, some type of FOB system. Is that for you, or will we have our other witness talk about that?
Probably more for Dan.
Okay, got it.
Yeah.
So any other questions or comments?
No, that's really it. Those are the changes that, you know, represent what we made to the revisions to the plan to address some of the Board's concerns that we heard at the last hearing.
All right, I have a couple of questions. We have, can you go through one more time what the garage door is going to look like, or is that someone else?
That's our.
I'll let the architect talk about that.
Architect will deal with the garage door and the material of the garage door.
We did add a garage door, but I'll let him talk about the material and the type of door.
He'll do that, okay.
Yep.
There is something in the engineering report about freestanding signs and that the applicant is asking for, requesting a waiver. That is on page three of the Avakian Report, number two. I was just wanting to make sure that we're asking, you're asking for a waiver, but I want to make sure that that freestanding sign is not going to be in the right of way of the city.
So we're not proposing any freestanding signs?
So then, so then you should...
I think it's on an awning, is it?
Yeah, I can speak to that.
Okay, so you'll speak to that, okay. They're also requesting a waiver, and this is Sam, this is, they're requesting a waiver for stormwater plan, off-site stormwater plan? Is that okay?
The off, so that's just, that was getting back to last week, just as long as they're saying it's de minimis, and it was received.
Okay, so that was okay. Okay. Just a moment. We've got all the lighting and the shielding that you spoke about. There is, there was number, there was a number five of them. Hang on. Five of 11. Okay. Groundwater recharge, you're saying that this section of the report should be provided? It's the very first item on page five. Is that, that should be a resolution condition?
So due to, so that's saying that they don't, the applicant is not subject to groundwater recharge because of where they are.
Okay, so they're okay. So we don't need, we don't need that as a condition?
Correct.
Okay, so that's it. Okay. There's also another requirement on page seven of 11 that you have of watering. Testimony should be provided about watering.
Yeah, so that, just to clarify, so that might also be a little bit more enforcement, a little bit extra for our end inspection, but what we constantly keep seeing is great landscaping plans put together, and then door construction, they're just not watered correctly. Or we always talk about the gator bags and the tree bags. It's something that I'm trying to be more adamant about in our letters, so you all here at First.
We're trying to get their plans to be more detailed.
Right. Right, so that should be part of resolution compliance?
Yeah, absolutely. And to be honest, it is, as there. I'm just trying to be more adamant about it now, so we can keep following it.
Happy to have it. Happy to have it.
So I make the subject to compliance with outstanding recommendations in both letters. That'll cover that for you.
Yes, 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 thank you.
Okay. All right, anybody else have anything else? Any of the Board members have anything else for this witness?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
You indicated that the gas meters are going to be installed inside the fence along the First Avenue where the fence returns. That's an open area. If you'll recall your plans, that's a picket fence on that return. Would it be better to put a stockade fence along that First Avenue?
Wow, I'm sorry.
Just for that, that 10 or 12 feet or whatever it is?
Because it's screedy with parking?
If you look at the...
We, we are proposing, that's the open style portion of the fence, and then along the, the property line that we share with our neighbors, it's solid.
Yes.
We are also enhancing it with quite a bit of landscaping, Four Seasons landscaping that'll be there all year round. But, you know, it's, it was something that was...
Well, I throw this out. I'm asking the question, would it be better to have a stockade fence for that little section along First Avenue to hide the meters? I don't know what other Board members think, but if we were trying to hide the meters, I would think that it might be more appropriate to put that stockade fence.
Well, you know, we do like to have open style fences on street-facing frontages in the front yard. You know, this is not the same standard because it's redevelopment plan. They do have, actually, yeah, thank you, Doug. There's a, there's a, whatever green shrubs proposed along that frontage behind and in front of the picket fence. Maybe instead of the whole thing being a solid stockade fence, you do like a screen panel? Kind of like over at Toll Brothers?
Would that be okay?
So it just sticks out maybe four feet?
All I'm saying is, I'm pointing out that those meters are going to be visible.
Yeah, we don't, we don't want them, you're right. We don't want them.
Maybe, maybe the landscaping should be put just inside the fence to block the view of the meters.
It is.
I'm just asking for...
Yeah, the only, the only opening we have is a small gate to allow for the meter reader to get back there.
Yeah.
But besides that, and, you know, if you're looking at it head-on from the sidewalk, you're not going to, you're not going to see the meters.
Okay.
Doug, just real quick, I know you had it, and we're happy for the auditory, the visual, the pedestrian sign. Did you say you put a detail on the plan? I don't, I might have missed that, just didn't see.
Yes.
Yes. Should be on the detail sheets.
Actually, can we look up to the gas meters for a second?
Yes.
Is it just regulators for the building, or are they individual meters for all of the units?
They are actual gas meters.
For all the units. So I am going to recommend that you have the option to install a screen panel perpendicular to that wall to screen the meters in the event on, once we see how it's built, how high they go.
Right. Well, always, we've had the experiences, most recently, where the fences weren't high enough. The meters were, so we just may have to make sure that they're hidden.
Another possibility is to put the meters along the Westley fence and just screen maybe, I don't know what the dimension is there, but looks approximately 20 feet, maybe just screen the solid fence for 10 feet and then pick up with the picket from there, just so it's screened.
Yeah, I'm just not sure if we have an option of where to put them. Right? We, you know, you know what we want. We don't want to see the meters.
We're, we are happy to agree to work with the Board and its professionals to ensure that they are completely screened.
A fence is best.
Yes.
I understand that people like landscaping.
And we recognize that, and we understand very...
You know, you know what we want.
Yes, yes.
Okay. All right. I don't know if someone can tell me, I know that there's an item on, on 4 of 11 of the Avakian Report where it says about water quality, and it says that you're proposing pervious payment for the proposed MEAC motor vehicle service. What is that? Where is this motor vehicle service?
So that is...
Because that, that allows you to comply.
Right.
I just don't know where it is.
To our show.
Go ahead.
Sure.
Tell us where that is.
I'm going to go to...
Because obviously, we want you to comply, and we know you're complying. I just don't know where.
Yep. So there is, motor vehicle service is essentially anywhere that's driven on by a car. There's a few instances where the proposed parking stalls actually protrude beyond the building. So in that, in that case, where a vehicle may be parked and, you know, we all, in a perfect world, cars don't, you know, drip any oil on the ground, but we all know it happens. So in that, in a situation like that, where there is open to the sky above, all of these spaces which are open to the sky above our pervious pavement so that that water can be treated by the pervious paving system before ultimately being, you know, discharged throughout the rest of the stormwater system.
Great, great, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Anybody else have any other questions? Board members, professionals?
That exhibit you showed us, I don't think we have, except the color exhibit.
Did you submit a new exhibit?
We did update the exhibit.
Okay, so let's call it...
We would be at A6.
A6, A6. What, what's the title?
1001 First Residential, 1001 First Ave Residential Landscape Layout.
Okay, great.
And we have a date on that?
It is dated 8/12/2025.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, since there's nobody, anyone from the public? Any questions? No? Okay, next.
Thank you.
All right, if I could, Madam Chair, I'd like to call Dan Zanetto, our architect.
Yeah.
Is Dan going to talk to us about the car share? The car share and the sign?
Well, we'll definitely talk about the sign, and we will talk about the car share as well.
Okay, good.
That's on my list.
Great.
Please raise your right hand. Solid swear affirm, testimony about giving this matter the truth, all truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please state your name for the record.
Daniel Zanetto.
You are a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey, correct?
Yes.
And you were in such capacity on August 4 of this year, and you're still in that capacity today, in good standing with your licenses.
Correct.
Great. Go right ahead.
Okay, so these are the plans that were submitted to the Board, the revised plans since the last hearing.
So let's call them A7. These are revised architecture plans?
And Dan, just put the date on them.
8/11/25.
Before, before we get going, I think that we, probably because they're revised, we did not bring in the engineering plans because we didn't really view them. Wasn't, that was the, he testified from the landscaping.
Right, right, that was that one, but we also received...
Well, that's, that's already part of the packet, correct?
It is part of the packet, and so is this.
That's part of the application.
So is this.
So is this.
This was submitted on the...
Well, you're testifying from this, correct? I want it identified.
Okay.
Anything that's testified from should be identified for the record.
Okay. Great.
Okay, I will try to breeze through the changes since the last presentation. On the ground floor plan, the only difference is the area that we were speaking about along First Avenue, where the gas meters are located. So what we did was we infilled the wall between, or the area between the two columns here and designated that as the gas meter location. So this was open, and we're creating a wall here to allow the gas meters to be mounted to the building. And also, as the civil engineer testified, the entry to the parking area along First Ave into the vestibule here, we eliminated that entry along First Ave along with the walkway to create a larger bio retention area. The floor plans on the second floor, this is the courtyard level, we added privacy fencing for the residential units that face the courtyard, so they now have a private courtyard area that's fenced and separate from the public area. Now skipping up to the fifth floor, the only change here is the change of the door to the common terrace was previously shown as a sliding door for accessibility. That would have to be a swing door, so we made that change. Now, the main changes that we did architecturally have to do with the facade on the ground floor level, the parking level. So we revised the size of the openings to better relate to the windows on the floors above. So now you'll see everything aligns. We also adjusted the head heights to bring them down, and we adjusted the type of screens that we're using in the openings so that they have a more closed-off louver at the top section of the opening, and then the vertical pickets at the lower section.
So in plain English, that is, I think, Donna, my notes reflected, I think you were looking for better balance? Is that, that's what that's all about?
That was to better relate the openings to the openings above, and also to better shield the garage lighting from pedestrians.
Which was a very big concern for the Board.
Right, and I have another exhibit that will better illustrate that. This also is the garage door. What's proposed here is a metal coiling door, so it has horizontal slats. It's anodized aluminum, but we can do a black aluminum that matches all of the trim on the building. And it's 20 feet wide and 8'6" high. And that's going to be a high-speed coiling door, so the hope is that when a car pulls up, that door opens quickly so we don't have queuing into the roadway.
I don't know how anybody else on the Board feels about the color of that, that they want to, want it to be, like you said, that you've given some choices of colors, that if you wanted to match the side of the building there, that...
You can also skip down to an image of that side of the building. Here's a view with the door when it would be closed. So it's horizontal slats about three inches or four inches.
But the color, our concern is the color.
The color is matching the metalwork on the building.
Okay, so that's what it's going to be as opposed to, it could be this or it could be that. It's going to be that.
That's what we would recommend.
Okay.
What's it called?
That was to better relate the openings to the openings above and also to better shield the garage lighting from pedestrians.
Which was a very big concern for the board.
Right, and I have another exhibit that will better illustrate that. This also is the garage door. What's proposed here is a metal coiling door. So it has horizontal slats. It's anodized aluminum, but we can do a black aluminum that matches all of the trim on the building. And it's 20 feet wide and 8 foot 6 high. And that's going to be a high speed coiling door. So the hope is that when a car pulls up, that door opens quickly so we don't have queuing into the roadway.
I don't know how anybody else on the board feels about the color of that, that they want to, want it to be, like you said, that you've given some choices of colors? That if you wanted to match the side of the building there, that.
You can also skip down to an image of that side of the building. Here's a view with the door when it would be closed. So it's horizontal slats about three inches or four inches.
But the color, our concern is the color.
Matching the metalwork on the building.
Okay, so that's what it's going to be as opposed to it could be this or it could be that? It's going to be that?
That's what we would recommend. The door? Oh, it's just black anodized. And we did update all of our calculations to ensure that with the reduced, yeah, the reduced opening sizes, we still complied with all of the natural ventilation requirements for parking garage, and we do. And then along the west elevation of the building, we did drop the top of the opening so that there's also a reduced opening size. And again, that was to shield view of the fixtures within the garage so that the top of that opening is now 8 foot. And those fixtures are up at 11 feet high. To help illustrate some of these viewpoints, we have a section, building sections with line of sight shown. So this here is along First Avenue, pedestrians standing on the sidewalk looking toward the building. You know, would have to look far into the, into the garage before they would see a light fixture directly, a light source. So what's happening here is we have a screen on the exterior wall in the openings where we have a louver at top. So it's a tighter, you know, louvered section. And then we have the vertical pickets below that. So we're taking our sightline from the bottom of the louver into the building. And we have similar diagrams for each of the right aways. So Second Avenue, you see here, again, looking far into the building before you see those light sources within the garage. And then on Langford, you know, we're not set back as far from Langford. So you're still looking, you know, into the garage before you see those fixtures. And this, you know, I think it was in response to another project in the city that had maybe a very tall garage where as you walk by it, you would see those fixtures. But I think here, you know, we're not an overly tall parking garage and we're doing our best to shield view of those fixtures directly. And these are all just updated images with the changes. So all the openings have been updated and we've added the garage door and we added the additional bio retention on First Avenue. And are there any other points to touch on the signage? So we only indicate one sign and that's the address sign on Second Avenue above the main entry. And we're currently illustrating that as a 10 inch high lettering, you know, cut out letter mounted to the face of the canopy. When we calculate the square footage, it comes to about six square feet. We don't think that it's an overly big sign for the elevation and, you know, the main entry of the building. I think it's what we would prefer if it's agreeable to the board to have six foot, six square foot address sign on Second Avenue.
All right, if it's not, then this is a design exception. How does everybody feel about it?
I don't have a problem with this.
Yeah, it's a large building. All right, so that's gonna be a design exception for that.
Excuse me, a quick question. I'm sorry to go back, but the courtyard, so there's interior fences now for, to give a private space for those. One, two, three, four.
Yes, so each of the, each of the residential units that directly looks into the courtyard on the second floor will have its own private courtyard area, terrace area that is separated from the open courtyard by a privacy fence.
And do you know what type? I just saw in the rendering like a black, do you know what type of fencing that will be?
Um, I think it would be, it would match the solid fencing that we have on site.
And I apologize if I'm in here somewhere, but the height of that?
It would be a six foot, uh, six foot high privacy screen is what we call it.
And is there, do they have access from their unit to that? There's one of these.
Yes, they'll have a slider from the living room, the living space.
All right, I can see.
Opening into the terrace. That is updated on the drawings. See, this unit here has a slider at the living area where these are casement windows.
Dan, you said six feet solid? I mean, it feels a little confining for, you know, that's where their windows are. I mean, they would want to provide them some screening from the public aspects of the courtyard, but now they're kind of stuffed in a little box.
As part of why is it, I'm sorry, what's the dimension?
All right, what would be the options?
It's eight, eight feet.
Eight feet from their window? They would have a fence?
Six foot solid fence.
Six foot solid fence. What, what other options would we have?
Maybe we go with something that has a little more openness. Maybe, and it could be like a metal mesh rather than, you know, pickets like a typical fence, but more like, you know, screen panel like we use on the HVAC.
What do you, what is the board thinking?
You know, it's a little more maybe, a little more openness so we get a little more light and air passing through that space.
What do you think, John?
Yeah, no, I think it'd be great if there was an option just to make it a little more less, um, as a box instead of feeling.
No problems if that's the pleasure of the board.
Okay, let's add that.
The only problem is I think it needs to be decided what it's going to be.
Yeah. Yeah. What do you think the?
I think 70% will be fine. It's just having a little bit of light and not, um, and air, I mean, that'll do it.
So about 70% coverage? Or what would you call it?
So maybe 30% openness.
All right, 30% openness.
Minimum.
Okay.
Minimum, might want to do more.
Anything further, Dan?
Uh, just the, the average square footage of the COA units, the affordable units, that was asked to be added to the plan and we will add that. Just to let you know, we meet the requirement, the three bedrooms average 1,157 square feet. The two bedrooms average 914 square feet. And the one bedrooms average 677 square feet.
So now we have, so that is compliant?
That complies.
Okay, so now we know what they are. Cause that's on page 12 or 14, item 10.5. So now we know what it is and we asked for you to provide that, so now we have it. While we're there, on the item 10.3 right above it, I know they said we recommend that the final configuration be subject to approval of the city as part of the applicant's affordable housing agreement.
And we would agree with that.
Are you overdoing that?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. Right, that's on 10.3. How about the, the car share? Where did we land with that?
I can speak to it, I suppose.
Sorry? We waived it, I just want to make sure that that's, that we're, we're in agreement that you don't want it, so do we have to put it in as a resolution, in resolution compliance? I'm just bringing up the things that might be in resolution compliance.
I appreciate that.
Correct?
We were gonna make a condition that the four car share spaces are optional.
Yes, but it has to be in resolution compliance, right? It can't just be, we're just saying it.
That's all.
Right, it's in the plans.
But they can have them if they want, they don't have them.
Right. So is that something we put in resolution compliance or you just put it in the plans? Where does that belong?
It'll be a condition.
Condition, okay.
Yeah, I'll put it in a condition.
That's what we want.
Advocate has the option of designing four car shares.
Yep.
And we thank you for that. We recognized the issues with.
Yeah, okay.
We're talking about condition. See on the renderings, you still have the green roof on top. Has there been a decision if it's gonna be a green roof or solar?
So the renderings are strictly just to illustrate the area of the green roof. We don't know yet if that's gonna be vegetated roof or it will be solar panels. I think it's kind of a condition of when this gets built and, you know, who builds it and the pricing of either of those systems. So we don't necessarily want to commit to one or the other, but we will comply with the redevelopment plan.
Dan, can you, um, did you guys pick a balcony light?
Balcony light?
A leak fixture for the balconies and the terraces.
Uh, so the fixture for the roof terrace? This is what we plan to have for the roof leveled, uh, private terraces. And these are full cutoff wall mounted lights. They would be 27K color temperature. And, you know, it's the lowest power outage that they, you know, power output that they offer, so.
So that's for the balconies and the roof deck?
This is for the, the roof deck. I don't think we were proposing lights on the balconies.
If I had balcony, I'd want a, I want a light.
I guess they're not.
Oh, they're not, they're not covered balconies.
Are those?
Okay.
See, they're like fixtures? Those light fixtures or is it something else at all?
The only place that we're showing fixtures, let's see.
I don't know, there's nothing on the elevations, maybe it's just a.
Yeah, they're beyond the elevations.
There is on the elevations. Second Avenue elevation.
We show them up on the fifth floor for the larger terraces that are set back. But the smaller balconies along the building, we don't show lights.
So they won't have lights? And then use the wedge fixture on the high pass terraces?
Dan, anything else to add?
Uh, no.
Madam Chair, if the board of public has questions, other than that, I don't believe I have any further witnesses unless the board has questions.
Anyone on the board have any other questions or concerns for this witness? Nope. Professionals? No concerns? Okay. Public? No concerns? No questions? Okay. Who's next or are we done?
Madam Chair, I respectfully rest.
Okay.
I was gonna call you, Your Honor.
You can even call me Barbara. I guess I will open it to the, to the public for comment, open public session.
So moved.
Close public session.
So moved.
Okay. All right. Any comments from the board before we? All right. All right, Jack, you're on.
You're on now?
You're on.
Adding two standard clauses to request to professional staff and shell. It's required to have everybody have a pre-construction meeting with the city professionals in addition to that staging plan.
Yes.
And there's a standard affordable housing clause that's gonna go into all resolutions from this point forward. So the others aren't, you know, subject to any requirements outstanding in the reports in compliance. We've already taken care of the four car share spaces at the option of the option. We're gonna have an installation of a quote screen panel. Close quote, to screen the meters if required after review by Donna's office and engineer.
And, yeah, the engineer.
Yeah, upon review and make sure it works.
Make sure that it's.
Once it's built.
Yes, high enough and.
Okay, that's fine.
And we understand the.
The intent?
The intent of that and the fact that it's after the fact as well.
Garage door finish to match the other metal, ar- groundwork throughout the building elements in a black anodized metal. The signage, it's gonna be a design exception. Designage as proposed is 10 inches high, a total of six square feet versus two feet, two square feet permitted. So it will be a design exception for that, there are no variances. The screen fencing in the courtyard area from the back of the units facing the courtyard, we're gonna revise that that six foot fence from a solid to 70% solid, 30% open. So that is a condition.
Minimum, 30% open.
Minimum?
And I think it'd be solid between the units. It's just on the courtyard side.
Let's round.
Anybody else have anything else?
So from the last time I had a pre-construction meeting with the immediately adjacent neighbors.
Oh.
Yes.
You want that as a condition?
I had it written that as a condition from.
Right, so we said work with the neighbors on pre-construction.
So I think there was things with like fences and trees right on the property.
We have no problem with that.
Right, right.
And the only other one I had was they're gonna install solar or green roof to comply with the sustainable roof requirement.
One second.
Right, we do, it will, it'll be either one, they haven't committed to which one.
But we will comply.
Yes.
Okay, what was the last one?
They'll install solar or green roof to comply with the sustainable roof requirement.
Comply with, what was the last part of that?
Sustainable roof requirements per the redevelopment plan, I would suggest.
I have some notes from the first meeting. You're doing the lot consolidation?
Yes.
And a screen vacation? Yes, okay. Do the crosswalk and that's changed.
Do you need to mention the vacating of the alleyway? That will be by the city?
Anybody else? No? Okay.
Madam Chair, my thanks to you is that no summation is necessary. I appreciate the time, I appreciate your extremely dedicated and thorough fashion with which you all and the board professionals have reviewed this and I respectfully request approval, subject to the conditions.
All right, can I get a motion to approve this application? All right, can I get a motion to approve this application with the resolution of the compliance items that we have just mentioned?
So moved.
James Bonanno.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Yes.
Jim Henry.
Yes.
Jen Souter.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gunnin.
Yes.
Chairwoman Kurzak.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
I'm glad we could get this turned around this quickly, thank you for the professionals and for you guys too. That was really nice for us to get this turned around so fast. Okay, all right, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Second? All in favor?
Yeah.
Yay!
Congratulations.